Okey dokey.
Way up here.
It is one thirty and it's time in our schedule for a planning hearing. Today, we're going to be hearing two files, AM zero 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 nine dash two two. And MLD zero zero five nine dash two two. And before we get started, does anybody have any, any issues with hearing or visual? Anybody have a problem? Are you hearing or visually impaired? Any assistance? Nope, not you. You sure? Okay, seen done. I'll call for conflict.
Commissioner Connolly has no conflict.
Commissioner Bradshaw has no conflict.
And Commissioner McDonald, I have no conflict. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with the AM zero 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 nine dash two two and staff may begin when they're ready.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Sadi from Bonner County Planning Department. We are here for the, for the hearing of this file adoption of development impact fee for Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. So this is the area that we are looking at. This is the Spirit Lake Fire District's area of service. It is divided into three sub-districts. These are some of the numbers that we pulled out from their capital improvements plan, which were, which was used to estimate what funding would be required for them to service the future residents of Spirit Lake Fire District. So the population is estimated to grow by two thousand, approximately two thousand people between twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one. Non-residential areas is would approximately grow by two hundred, two hundred and sixty thousand per feet. Residential units would grow by approximately seventeen thirty-five units. And the applicant is requesting to maintain the current level of service, which is ninety percentile fractal response of five to eight minutes. The proposed fee collection would be seventy twenty-five for per residential unit. And eighty-six cents for per non-residential unit. These are the agencies that were notified of this request on June twenty-second. We received comments from these agencies, but they only replied with no comments. We only received one public comment on the file that was more of a query of how the process works rather than in opposition or favor of the project. These are the state statutes and the Bonner County advice code against which this project was reviewed. These are the list of code state statutes against which this project was reviewed. They include development impact, PR, purpose definitions, minimum standards and requirements for the, for the ordinances. The advisory committee imposition of development impact fee proportionate share determination, capital improvements plan credits, et cetera. The capital improvements plan study that we received included all these that all these introduction, land uses, impact fee calculation, P analysis and administrative recommendations. And this is the analysis we, which we will discuss now. The proposal is in accordance with the purpose of this act. That is to serve new growth and development and that a proportionate share of the cost of such development be paid by those who benefit from it. So it will only apply to the people who move into Spirit Lake Fire District. Going forward after the implementation and it would not impact any current residents. Minimum standards and requirements for development impact fee ordinances, the fee calculation is based on the district's current level of service and the applicant is requesting to maintain that service. An intergovernmental agreement would be required between the district and Bonner County to implement that fee. This section calls for establishment of development impact P advisory committee, which consists of at least five members. As per the applicant, the existing committee consists of at least two members who are active in the business of development, building or real estate. The public hearing for this, for this file has been held according to the standards of the state code. No material changes were made to the file since the submission of this proposal to Bonner County. And the applicant has taken into consideration any appropriate credits, contribution of money or offsets available to determine proportionate share of the cost of capital improvements. The district plans to purchase approximately five point nine dollar million dollars in capital improvements over the next ten years and almost a three point two dollar million dollars of which is eligible for impact. Replacement of existing capital not eligible for inclusion and impact fee calculations will be funded by other sources of revenue such as applicable. The proposal was prepared by Galena Consulting. They are qualified professionals in the field of engineering and planning. The applicant's proposal contains these following headings consisting, consistent with the requirements of the state code. The district's current assets intend to use property tax revenues, grants and other sources of funding to cure existing system deficiencies. Analysis of the total capacity, the level of current usage and commitments for usage of existing capital improvements prepared by licensed engineer. Description of land use assumptions. Establishment of ratio of service unit to various types of land users, what we saw earlier, residential unit and non-residential unit. Description of system improvements and their costs, total number of service units, projected demand, identification of all sources and levels of funding. The district is making this, the following implementation recommendation pursuant to the section of the code. If a developer constructs or contributes all or part of a growth related project that would otherwise be financed with impact fees, that developer must receive a credit against the fees owed for this category or at the developer's choice be reimbursed from impact fees collected in the future. The district is also making these following recommendations, implementation recommendations. The district should maintain impact fee funds separate and apart from general fund. All current and future impact fee revenue should be immediately deposited into the account and withdrawn only to pay for growth related capital improvements of the same category. Their spending policy says the fund should be prohibited from paying for any operational expenses and the repair and replacement or upgrade of existing infrastructure not necessitated by growth. In cases when growth related capital improvements are constructed, impact fees are an allowable revenue source as long as only new growth is served. In cases when new capital improvements are expected to partially replace existing capacity or to partially serve new growth. Cost sharing between general fund or other sources of revenue. Refunds, appeals, collection, other powers or rights not affected, transitional severability, they are all related to the adoption of the ordinance for this, for this project. The ordinance for the project that is titled fifteen development impact fee was, was adopted last year with the implementation of development impact fee for Northside Fire District. And the ordinance at that time was vetted against these standards. So the ordinance has not changed, only Spirit Lake Fire District would be included in that ordinance to implement this. The proposal is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. These standards were laid out in the staff report in, in a lot of detail. This proposal is intended to provide for future growth and development while maintaining the current level of service. It will not impact the services and utilities of the present day users adversely. The proposal encourages developers to provide infrastructure, utilities or financial support for the services needed for the proposed development. By making an implementation recommendation that the developers receive credit or be reimbursed if they construct or contribute to all or part of a growth related project that would otherwise be financed by impact fees. The applicant is proposing adoption of capital improvements plan in order to serve the project. In order to serve the projected growth for a ten-year period that is from twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty-one. It would allow the fire district to use development impact fee funds for system improvements without burdening the current system. Spirit Lake Fire Protection District provides for fire protection services to unincorporated areas of Bonner County along with Cootney County and City of Spirit Lake. The amendment therefore proposes implementation of development impact fee in the areas of counties served by the Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. The request for adoption of capital improvements plan is based on the, on the district's assessment to serve future developments without adversely impacting the current users. This proposal explores the option of adoption of development impact fee for Spirit Lake within its area of service to mitigate any impacts of future development on the current level of service. The proposal is in accord with Idaho Code Chapter seven, Title thirty-one. It doesn't accord with Idaho Code Chapters sixty-five and eighty-two of Title sixty-seven. And it is in accord with the public, public services goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the project, planning commission recommended approval of the project. It was a unanimous approval and I can take any questions at this one.
I don't have any. General, you have any questions for Sadi?
I've got a question, but I, I don't know if it's would be for you or for the applicant and you know, I, I'm just sitting here calculating and exposed people can see me. I'm running a few numbers through and I know that Northside did theirs and it brings up a question is seventeen twenty-five and it's flat for any size of dwelling. And then it's eighty point eighty-six cents per thousand or eight, right? So the, the fact of the matter is, is that if you build a five thousand square foot home, that's a bargain compared to the folks that are building a five thousand square foot shop. So anyway, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Commissioner. Good. Take your weight.
All right. Commissioners Anne Westcott with Galena Consulting. I'm here with Spirit Lake Fire. It's a very good question and it's often asked when we do fire impact fees. We have no evidence that says a five thousand square foot home calls nine one one more than a twenty-five hundred square foot home. There can be more people or less people in that house. Fire service is constructed for readiness to serve for the potential that a call could come from any address. And that's why we don't differentiate. Some cities are starting to differentiate, having higher fees for bigger houses and lower fees for, like, you know, apartments. Those tend to be cities that are really trying to align with their affordable housing priorities. It is something that Spirit Lake could do in the future. Definitely. We just don't have statistical data that tells us how often they go to one size versus the other.
Well, I think it's just based on the value of the structure. I mean, if you have a thousand square foot home, that's a pretty modest home. And you have a five thousand square foot home that is, you know, has, you know, five hundreds bucks a square.
Correct.
This is probably going to cost you quite a little bit more to respond. I just think it seems to make sense to just maybe put it all at eighty-six, you know, that would
And that waits by square footage. Is this, is this only unoccupied structures or any structure?
It would be any, any structure. If I already have a parcel and I'm building a pole barn, you're not going to charge them one. But if I'm going to build a, a new barn for retail, something, any, anything that has the potential to be occupied or, you know, burn, that's additional is what requires additional service.
Hey, I, that's just a question I have. It just seems somewhat, you know, I mean, whether like water users or anything else, it's impact as, as per cost, you know, it's like.
When we do impact fees for streets or for utilities, it gets down to that engineering standard of flow or trip generation. For fire and, and law enforcement, it usually is per house or non-residential square foot. Although certainly Spirit Lake in its next update, you could ask that they break it out in that way again. I think all of the fire districts in, in Bonner and Cootney have just done this first pass and kind of are doing it in the most simple way. But certainly in the next iteration, that could be direction the county may wish to give to the, the districts.
The other side of that coin. Fire department being unique. If it's a ten thousand square foot house or a thousand square foot house, your fuel and manpower is the same price per hour as mile regardless of what structure you're going to.
Big street fire engines at the big one where it takes one at the small.
Depends on the size of the fire.
And, and certainly Commissioner, there is in the ordinance, the ability for any applicant to say our house does or does not have the same impact as any other and they could have an individualized assessment on that basis.
You can open the bat. Okay. Someone from Spirit Lake want to speak at all? Are you good with? Alrighty, then we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Anybody want to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody neutral, any chance? You're neutral? Do you think you're neutral? We rarely have anybody that's really neutral. Go ahead.
You can give it a
You want to speak, go ahead and go to the mic. I didn't hear your name, the record.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Eha and I, I, I have some questions because I was at the planning meeting on August sixteenth when this was brought before the, uh, planning department initially. And per my understanding, the fire districts have to ask for capital improvement fees and that they're not just given at time of, you know, permit requiring, which is what this is for. So and I'm also under the, the knowledge that fire districts are not notified of minor land divisions. So I'm just seeing this area where I feel that it's not, that, that's not good for our fire districts to have to ask for capital improvement P fees, possibly pay consulting agencies to show the need for it. And then not be notified of minor land divisions when there is a description of land use assumptions that they have. So if they have this assumption of land use, then that thing can change, that assumption can change with a minor land division and they not know about it. It just seems like a, a, a black hole or something that doesn't make much sense for our fire districts, especially at a time with increased fire risk. Maybe this is something that I bring to, you know, email to the planning department to see if we can change. I don't know, but I mean, it just doesn't seem fair to our fire districts with the increase of fire risk that they have to ask for this kind of stuff. So I guess I'm for it then. But thank you.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I sound like I'm against it.
So you can respond. I don't have to.
I, I can't respond to the black hole part of the other part, but the part about them asking states in the state of Idaho, fire districts don't have ordinance authority, so they can't adopt their own fees. So the only way they can get fees is to ask their cities and their counties who collect the building permits or location permits to do that for them. So it's, it's more of a, an inefficient state requirement than anything to do.
Well, and as far as
You have a few of those.
As far as minor land division goes, when there's a minor land division, a structure is built, then it kicks in. You guys fight structure fires. You don't fight ground fires. That's IDL that fights those. So the reason that M, MLD wouldn't apply is because there's no structure yet. Once the structure is built, then they get, they get their cut.
Once, once you start a house.
Yeah. There is no density until you build a house. There's just lines on the ground with MLB. They don't fight ground fires. If your field's on fire, they don't fight that. That's ID.
Well, they probably do.
Well, they might.
Under an agreement.
Yeah, they might have an MOU, but but technically, but technically it's a, it's an IDL issue. They worry about structures.
So this is collected at the time they came in and get a permit.
Get a building, build a location permit.
And that's another reason that it's here because we collect it and then we distribute it to them.
So, yeah. Okay, anyone, anyone else neutral? Anyone opposed? Seen none. We'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll go for, is there any rebuttal that's needed? Anybody feel like rebuttal? No. Okay, we'll go ahead and close all public comment then go deliberation. Yeah, I don't have a problem with this. We passed one for Northside. I think it's good. And we can see the impact out there with, in Blanchard already, just like we see everywhere else in the county. So I think it's important that the, the folks that are creating the, the additional density pay for that, for those services.
Yeah, I'd like to see them do it two years ago.
Yeah, I think that, I think they've been working on it.
Like it's falling and works really slow. I'm just getting answers. Now it's not, I'm just kidding.
This has been
This takes, these things take time.
Yeah, this has been in the work for quite a while, whether it's this one or all the other ones she's working on throughout the county. I guess I worry that the county is probably missing out on something we should be doing too. We were hoping for legislation that was going to clarify how and where it could be spent. You know, with the impact fees so that we can spend it more broadly. But at this point, we waited and, and now we may be behind everybody else. And so then it's going to be what I would call a pretty big hit. You're, you know, if, if the county implements countywide impact fees also, it's going to be a pretty big hit, but sure.
I, I think you're just exactly where every other county is of going, oh, maybe we should look at this. We don't look at it until the growth is, you know, right, past our expectation. I was just at the Cootney County Board this morning and they have just done a study for sheriff jail and parks and it so it really is, if you feel that that's an appropriate funding mechanism, if you think that growth is potentially putting your current level of service at some risk in terms of, you know, jail bed space, some counties jails are fine and they don't need more space.
Worried about roads.
So roads, right. So, so the county could do, I mean, I've done roads for Hayek County and Jim County and Elmore County and right. So that, that is something as well that you may wish to look at.
Okay, so the commercial breaks over.
Yeah. So again, I mean, we we have been looking at this for several years and we still have not moved, so it'll be up to the new board to look at it some more, but I worry that we will become somewhat unaffordable for building. And, you know, as we talk about the new people coming in and, and getting it with these impact fee, it also affects the people that live here. If you're going to build something. So, I mean, I think there was a few people that were caught off guard with the Northside thing. They were like, well, wait a minute. I mean, we have to pay a lot of this for the new people. So anyway, I mean, they, they just a lack of understanding. Yeah, all of these things, but I'm for it. I, I, the, the state allows us very few ways to fund growth and this is one of them. One of the few.
Okay, Steve, anything you want to add? We kind of chew up all the bandwidth before it gets to you. Sorry about that.
You commented early on.
That's true. Okay. Well, with that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
All right, I've moved this file. Project AM zero 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 nine dash two two. To amend the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan for Adoption of Capital Improvement Plan for Spirit Lake Fire Protection District. As presented or amended in this hearing, finding that it is in accord with general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. As enumerated in the following findings, fact and conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to time staff report was prepared, testimony received. At this hearing, a further move to adopt following findings, fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
Well, second to motion.
Okay, we have a motion, the second roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, that motion passes. Now the motion for a conference plan amendment resolution.
What's the resolution number to clarify? Okay. Chairman, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventy-three amending the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan.
Here we have a motion, a second roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, ma'am.
Yeah, that motion passes now down to the menu Bonner County Revised Code Title fifteen.
I move to approve project filed AM zero 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 nine dash two two requesting an amendment to Bonner County Revised Code Title fifteen, Development Impact Fees. Finding that it is in accord with general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Bonner County Revised Code is enumerated in the following conclusions of law. Based upon the evidence submitted up to time staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, a further move to adopt following findings, fact and conclusions of law. As written as set forth in staff report or as amended during this hearing and direct planning staff to transmit this decision to all interested parties. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, ma'am.
We've got one more.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve an ordinance of Bonner County, the number to be assigned citing its authority and providing, providing for amendment of the Bonner County Revised Code with the amendment of Title fifteen, Development Impact Fees and Providing for an Effective Date. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the official ordinance upon the publication.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
And that motion passes.
You thought about it for
And that concludes that file. We should charge by the notion.
No.
Over there. Okay, so we'll move on to MLD zero zero five nine dash two two.
Hopefully you're
And staff may begin. Oh, by the way, conflict of interest. Anyone?
Commissioner Bradshaw has no conflict of interest.
Mr. Connolly has no conflict.
And Commissioner McDonald, I have no conflict.
Right. Good afternoon, Commissioners, members of the public. Thanks for being here today. We're here to discuss a minor land division application. The applicant requested a modification to their original application. So we're back here for hearing for administrative approval if the board decides today that that is appropriate. This is for a property located off Woodview Road in section eighteen township fifty-seven north range two west Boise Meridian. Today is September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two and I am Chad Chambers, planning staff for the record. The applicant is requesting to divide a six point five eight seven acre unplanted parcel into two platted lots, one three point oh eight acre lot and one three point four nine acre lot. The application was originally filed on June third, twenty twenty-two, where it was accompanied by fees and deemed complete by planning staff. Modification to the original application was filed September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Today would be the date of the administrative decision for either administrative approval or denial by the board at this public meeting, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Again, the property is approximately six point five eight seven acres. What we see on screen with revision done by the surveyor Dan Provolt, that's the approximate acres that was provided with this revision. The zone is suburban. It's in the suburban growth comprehensive land use plan designation. Access to the proposed lots would be provided by Woodview Road, which is a county right of way with varying widths, but it's privately maintained. And again, Dan Provolt is a county or not the county server, but the surveyor rather, who prepared the plot. The original plot and the revision that we're going to see today. Environmental features on site include slopes between fifteen to twenty-nine percent. There are no wetlands on the property. There are no map streams on the property. It's in FEMA Special Flood Hazard Zone X reviewed by Jason Johnson twice, the first time June sixth, twenty twenty-two. Second time Jason Johnson reviewed it was September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And again, found in zone X. Soil on site includes Andrei silt loam. Its farmland classification is not prime farmland and a drainage class is well drained. So services on site. The site would be provided sewage services by individual septic systems, water by individual wells. The applicant did acknowledge that the parental health district wouldn't sanitary restriction lift would not be lifted with proposed lot sizes. Power on site would include a Vista. Access to the property again would be by Woodview Drive, I believe, would be road. I apologize. County right of way privately maintained, where varying widths. This is the revised plot map that was submitted to planning staff and reviewed for you today. Here we can see the proposed two lot subdivision. Again, the, the surveyor, as before, we can see on the left-hand side, the legal description did change, of course, with the new lots being proposed. Surveyor, as before, we can see on the left-hand side, the legal description did change, of course, with the new lots being proposed. Um, but again, the surveyor did note that the property is subject to CCNRs. And um, here we can also see that the Panhandle Health District sanitary restriction has not been lifted. I'm sorry, so we're not probably coming yet. I, I will respond to your questions though. Um, so the, these are the standards of review that the file was reviewed for. So in the Bonner County Revised Code Title twelve, one one one, uh, the zoning regulations and districts for unincorporated areas of Bonner County. Are here and established have been made in accordance with the comprehensive plan and Idaho code. As we look at the zoning designation for this property, it is suburban. Um, and um, again, if we look at uh, twelve, three, two, four B. Use of this zone is appropriate and area is designated by the comprehensive plan as transition urban growth area, resort community or suburban growth area in the comprehensive plan. So this property is in the suburban growth area. So the zoning is consistent with the comp plan. But the lot sizes being proposed are over the two and a half acres. And as we can see here in the suburban zoning designation and um, Bonner County Revised Code. Title twelve, four, one, two, um, the minimum lot size where urban sewer and water services are not available can be two and a half acres. Staff reviewed the file against. The requirements set forth in the Minor Land Division Code. Title twelve, six sixty. Um, the Minor Land Division complies with the suburban zoning designation. Provided conditions of approval are met prior to final plat recording. Um, the applicant's requesting to create a total of two lots. So we're under that four maximum. Um, the property complies with Bonner County Revised Code, uh, twelve, six sixty C. The property is an unplanted parcel. Application was deemed complete at the time in which it was submitted on June third, when pays, uh, fees were paid in full. Um, the lots would be accessed by Woodview Road, a privately maintained county right of way with varying widths. Those lots conform to the depth to width standards and the revised code. There are no submerged lands on the properties. Division is designed around identified natural hazards. All lots as proposed should have viable building sites. The sanitary restriction on the plat satisfies the provision of the code and. The proposed lots and the respective sizes and acres is appropriate for the suburban zoning district. Um, if approved, none of the resulting lots would be divided by either a county right of way, city zoning designation, railroad right of way, or public right of way. Um, the Idaho license surveyor did prepare the Stan Provolt. Um, again, the plot was reviewed and. And um, it was routed to the appropriate departments in Bonner County as well as our county surveyor. Twice. And today, um, the Board of County Commissioners is tasked with the authority to either administratively approve or administratively deny the preliminary plot. Staff concluded this project is consistent with Bonner County Revised Code and therefore recommends that the commissioners approve administratively approve of the plot today. The findings of fact have changed slightly, um. Uh, since we're now proposing to create two lots instead of four, that finding of fact change from what it was previously. Remaining, remaining findings of fact um, should not have changed materially. Inclusions of law, staff did find that the minor land division is in accord with the suburban zoning district. It is in alignment with the existing roads and easements. The, the proposed land division is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code. Provided conditions of approval are met prior to final plat recording. Um, A one, final plat shall be recorded. Um, A two is basically, you have two years. You can request in writing an extension for two years. And this condition is written in a way that the authority for that extension would have to come from the county commissioners. And then finally, all corrections and conditions as required by the assessor, the GIS department, the county surveyor, Bonner County Road and Bridge, as well as the planning department. Are met and satisfied prior, prior to final plat recording. At this time, I can take any questions.
Is there any questions? Yeah, it's pretty simple. No. Does he have to wish to say anything?
Uh, sure.
You don't have to. I do have to.
Um, so give a little bit of background briefly on the.
Identify yourself.
Yeah. Jake, about, uh, thank you applicant. I should have known that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. So after receiving the initial approval, but last month, um, I contracted with some. Outside sources to help meet the conditions of approval that were outlined by the staff after receiving some. Um, reports back and doing my own personal analysis on it. I didn't feel that I could meet the conditions in a timely manner for myself. So. I decided to apply for this modification. And essentially combine the three one acre lots into a three acre and a three and a half roughly as presented. Um, and that's kind of the, the rationale or the basis behind this. Um, it shifts a little bit my, my goals for the property, but I think I can make it work. So. Other than that, it's, you know, it meets all the zoning minimums and um. I can answer any questions from the.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? None?
None, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jake. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to any public comment. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in favor? You want to speak in favor? Are you sure? Because last time you thought you were neutral and we really couldn't tell. Go ahead. Go ahead. No, I said. I meant earlier today.
Yeah, no. Um, hi, Elizabeth Hagen. Um. Thank you, Jake, for seeing your way to amending your application. It really does mean a lot to us, your neighbors. Um, I am grateful for this outcome and there are still issues to discuss. The decision to amend this MLB application came just two days after we submitted our motion to reconsider along with three hundred and thirty dollars to do so. Because of this, I sent an email to the planning department on September sixteenth, asking if we were eligible for a refund, since the application would not be going to judicial review. I have received no reply. On September eighth, I had emailed the planning department to confirm the submission timeframe of an MTR. And that neighbors of Woodview are interested in submitting an MTR. The department confirmed timeframe as fourteen days, which would make the deadline September twelfth, just one point five more business days later. Both the county or the director himself knew that the application would be amended because he cannot satisfy the conditions of approval at that time. I find it unethical that we were not notified until after we submitted our motion to reconsider. We spent over seven hundred dollars and so much of our time proving that the decision to approve was fall in the first place was an erroneous application of the law to the facts. County staff and B O C C found the proposed MLB consistent with code twelve dash four one two. However, the density and dimensional standards table within that part of the code.
I've got an issue question. First of all, none of this is relevant at this point. You were supposed to be in favor of this. You're in favor. You sound like.
It's a file in front of us.
You've got issues with other things outside of the file in front of us. If you can't keep it to that, I'll have to ask you to sit down.
Well, I thought that this is all pertinent to the file because for us, this.
Just, just, just this.
So he's one speaking to because the decision to modify.
Funds for appeal costs and that is.
Points.
So either stick to this.
What you're interrupting and objecting and also what's the worst.
To know is. You've asked you to keep, you keep it to this.
Stand here and tell you guys this stuff.
Now you're out of order. You have a choice. You can sit down or you can leave.
This is obstruction, Mr. McDonald's.
You have a choice. You can sit down or you can leave.
Sorry, this is obstruction. I'm not going to leave. I'm here. I worked hard. My neighbors sent only seven hundred.
Okay, you're done.
Seven hundred dollars to appeal this application.
Remove from the building. You can either behave in a civil manner and follow the rules as everyone else. Pardon?
I'm asking of you. I'm asking of all of you guys.
Going to keep this meeting under control. That has nothing to do with this, with this hearing. This.
Any one of us would be willing to have that conversation with you outside of what this application is about. So what we're tasked with and what the law states is that you can talk about the app, application. And, and you, we can't get off on all kinds of other things. It really doesn't matter. I'd be happy to have a conversation with you outside of this meeting. Whether or not you should have a refund or not. I think there's a validity to it, but that's.
Well, I guess we'll just have to do it another time.
That would be best.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this? Go ahead, ma'am. Please identify yourself, so for the record.
My name is Emily and I'm, um. I live on Woodby Road. And I just wanted to thank Jank, thank Jank as well for um, amending his application and. Uh, I'm in support of it since it's not um. Severely um, impacting our road with a lot of different lots. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Anyone neutral? Anyone opposed? You want to be opposed to him modifying this?
Um.
If you're opposed to it, that means it goes back to four lots.
That's a loaded question.
No, I'm just saying, if you're opposed to this, that means you want it to be four lots instead of two lots.
Okay, then I'll, I'll be equal.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, thank you for letting me have a chance to speak. I'm David Mann. Um, while I applaud the change in this MLB and to creating two lots from one. We still have the real risk of uh, creating four homes from one. Um, but under the current zoning, it appears this is the best we can do. Um. I think if I continue, I'm going to run the risk of shading slightly to previous concerns um, that were brought up. Um, and so I think I will address.
And like anytime you want to, just give me a call and I'll have that conversation with you outside of this, you know.
Mind changing. Yeah, I think you found us to be pretty easy to work with outside of the.
Yeah, um, this is not the same issue. This is um, property rights issue that you brought up during the hearings.
And again, yeah, we'll have that conversation.
So that's, thank you.
But the caring is supposed to be very strict guideline.
Yep. Okay, anyone else? You'll be out there? Okay.
Hi, Reg Crawford, Sandpoint, Idaho.
Okay.
I am, I'm approve of this file. I think it falls within uh, Bonner County Revised Code and I'm. I'm grateful that the changes were made to put it in alignment with the code. Um. I look forward to meeting with Jeff and, and David and Liz. I think this will be a great meeting for the four of us. That we can get together and discuss this because there are many flaws within the MLB process. Um, and Mr. Bell's failure to acknowledge that this split well is urban water is not consistent with the code. And the fact that he will be in the unique position of administratively approving other MLDs, which may try to utilize the same erroneous interpretation. It's, well, that's problematic. Uh, furthermore, that Mr. Gabel doesn't understand that MLDs are not subject to subdivision design standards. And therefore the subdivision design standards code cannot be applied to MLDs. Well, that's even more concerning. Uh, MLDs need to be.
Please stick to the file.
At the August tenth hearing.
Wondering about MLDs in general, please stick to this file in front of us.
Okay, I will. I, I just want to say, um, I'll cut it down. As for A two that you guys discussed today at this hearing. This portion should be contained in the Bonner County Revised Code. To have it as a condition of approval that is up to B O C C approval at a later time is not the appropriate way to handle it. It should be codified under twelve dash uh, six, six, zero. And um. I just want to say that I appreciate all the neighbors who opposed the file because they were berated and ignored and denied due process as they were again today when they were speaking. I uh. I hope that this board considers making changes that return transparency and integrity to land use here in Bonner County. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else out there? We'll go ahead and close public comment, go to deliberation. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, rebut. Go ahead. My bad.
I just wanted Chad Chambers again, planning staff for the record. I just want to, the record to clarify. Um, that condition A two. That is a condition. A one and A two is a standard condition that we put on every single minor land division. All we're doing for condition A two is replacing. This. The second sentence from planning director to planning staff, we're submitting the final MYLAR. And then we're replacing the authority for the extension to come from the Board of County Commissioners. So I just want the record to reflect the, these two conditions are standardized conditions.
Right.
It's not exclusive to this file. We're just changing the authority from where this comes from.
That was also covered in the previously two hearings as well. I don't understand why people don't hear it. So hopefully they heard it this time. Okay, you have a rebuttal as well?
I think when I met with Jake Gabel, applicant for the record, um, when it comes to the conditions of approval, again, uh, as Chad mentioned. Um, this was all sent to legal review as well. So it, it's not prudent in planning to draft specific. Regulation about um, to cover every circumstance, right? We're not going to write a provision for if the planning director is the applicant, then this is the process because. Or if another county employee, right? Um, so when we reviewed or when this was reviewed by, by legal. Um, I believe these changes for the, to change of the Board of County Commissioners just made a lot more sense. I don't think it's prudent to give myself the power to extend my own file. That, that authority should come from the board who's making the administrative approval. Again, that's why we're here today. Because that, the ultimate authority of the ultimate approval of this is coming from the board. So.
Well, and having hearing the whole denial of due process, this is literally the third hearing. Each one of these hearings is due process.
I think if, yeah, that's all I have rebuttal for this specific file.
Okay. All righty, now we're going to go and close it to, any further public comment? Yeah, I'm all for this.
Yeah, um. I think that we talked about this at the first approval is that, that, you know, you have to be able to meet these conditions and um. Didn't feel that it, it was going to be something he could do. So we decided to modify it and, and take it up to where. It doesn't have to have those certain things, um. You know, private well or each individual well, excuse me, and um. There's a sewer system.
Yeah, not have a. Community, community well, which does need code, but.
Over two point five.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm all for this. I think it's a reasonable way to go with the situation. Renders itself well to this decision to go forward with this.
Steve?
Yep, I'm good with it.
Yep, you would think. Okay, so I'll go and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the preliminary plot for the project file MLD zero zero five nine dash two two would be acres. They requested divide one six point five eight seven acre unplatted parcel into two lots. One with three point four nine acres and one with three point zero eight acres. Finding that the minor land division. Uh, as, as proposed is in accordance with Bonner County Revised Code, I further move to adopt the findings of facts and conclusions of law. As set forth in staff memo and direct staff to draft written findings and conclusion to reflect this decision. Uh, the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in a taking private property.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second roll call vote. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, ma'am.
Okay, emotions approved. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn this hearing at.